Good evening. I'm Jane Negreeny, President of the Wilson School Board. I'd like to call to order the May 19th, 2014 School Board Meeting. Could I get a roll call, please?
Dr. Shimmelweski.
Here.
Mr. Earl. Mr. Huff.
Here.
Mrs. Mack.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Metzger.
Here.
Mr. Negreeny.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of the Flag?
Announcement regarding public participation. There are two opportunities to address the board. One is on agenda items, and the second is on non-agenda items. That is, at the end of the meeting. If you wish to be heard, please approach Ms. Raffaf and indicate that you have signed up and you would like to discuss a topic. Pursuant to the Sunshine Laws and the board policy, there's a three-minute opportunity. This is not a question-and-answer session, but is instead your opportunity to provide the community on items that are in your opinion, on items that are before the board or that may come before the board.
Thank you. Is there any public participation on agenda items this evening?
There is not.
Wilson, good news. First Saturday, May 17th, was the 2014 Berks County Pupil Transportation Association's Annual Driver Safety Competition. We had five drivers finish in the top 22 places of the competition, four within six points of each other. Kim Lurch placed third and is qualified for the State School Bus Safety Competition to be held in State College, Pennsylvania this June. And secondly, this past Wednesday evening, Wilson High School had its academic awards banquet. A few of the board members were present. It was a celebration of the academic excellence here at Wilson. Every year that I attend, I continue to be amazed with the success and efforts of our students. We had one of our students score a perfect 800 on the math portion of the SAT, so I welcome everyone to try to join next year if you haven't attended one of these, again, demonstrating the success and education that Wilson provides here to its students. This evening, we have a presentation on the Naterium. Mr. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Negreeny. The purpose of tonight is really just to catch everyone up to speed on where we are with the pool project. We are obviously in the last couple of weeks with the anticipated opening date of June 3rd. So, there's a lot of action that's going on down in that pool area to make sure everything gets accomplished. As everyone's aware, the original pool was over fifty years, excuse me, just about fifty years in age, which is just over twice the lifespan of a typical commercial facility. Wilson School District and the community got plenty of good years out of that pool, but it was also time for making some decisions on what we would end up doing. There were two different options that we ended up having. A new build, which ultimately that new build would have ended up costing twice as much as what the current renovation project has cost us. This is really just showing you the exterior entrance. The upper left-hand corner is showing the artist rendition, and the lower right-hand corner is showing their current state. If you have driven by, obviously you would end up seeing that right now. Recognize, the photos that you'll be seeing were taken last week. There was additional work that was done over the weekend as well as today, so some of these photos, even though they're current, are still even a little outdated. This is what everyone will end up seeing when they're coming into the facility for the first time. Again, the upper left-hand corner is showing the artist rendition. The right-corner photo shows two men working really hard. Obviously, some of our staff themselves have put in there two sets to make sure that the project is staying on time. The lower corner is showing the photo as it was on Friday afternoon. Just to point out a few different things in that photo. The red top desk, that is the reception area, it'll end up having multiple purposes. One of those purposes, obviously, will be a reception desk, would be used for a reader during the day if needed. Additionally, that will end up being used for ticket sales for different events, as well as concessions for different events. Those events would be both for our sporting activities, as well as community activities, such as our gym and swims, which open up the gymnasium, and also the pool for our entire community, as well as our dive-in movies, which allows community to come in, to use the main facility, throw some rafts into the pool, watch a big movie up on the movie screen. Two other things to point out. One, if you look at the flooring, I promise you that's not the finished product. That is actually the cardboard that's being used to protect the terracotta floor, which is throughout the building, but for this section, it's a grayer color with some bold red areas to really stand out. Once the cardboard's taken up, after that construction is done through that area, they were trying to avoid wear and tear, they'll polish them up. It's gonna look fantastic. Also, that shiny board in that background, that is the Wilson Education Foundation's donor recognition board. That board is highlighting our major donors for the project. That was through the capital campaign that we ended up running last year. Obviously, there was a lot of things that we wouldn't have been able to do without the support of our community, so that being a main focal point for anybody walking into the pool area. When you leave the pool, you have two different directions you can end up going. If you went to the right, you'd be walking right into the pool area. Going to the left, which the majority of our community, our students during the day, as well as our opponents when they're coming in for the different events, will go to their left, which is gonna take them down the Hall of Fame corridor. Again, the artist rendition on the top portion, two additional photos of the two different corridors that make up the Hall of Fame corridor. The first corridor is really where we're gonna end up having our trophy cases. In each of those boxes, between the trophy cases, are window seats that will put some historical photos that will highlight activities that have taken place in our pool area over the years. It looks like they're all lights on the ceiling. They're actually a light and also skylights. Under three of those skylights, we'll end up on the right side of that hallway, we'll end up putting up our 300 donor tiles that were purchased, again, part of the capital campaign. So, they'll be framed in, and each of those three will end up having about 100 tiles and, again, show the different donors. They were able to put, whether they wanted to put their family names, or past alumni, or even special events that were actually highlighted for different state championships for swimming and water polo. The photo on the right, that actually is coming down. When you go down that hallway, you would be making a right turn, and this hallway leads to the general locker rooms, as well as the lower house gymnasium and auxiliary gym. On the right, obviously, that's additional storage space. On the left, excuse me, trophy case, on the left, that could be for future tile donations if we wanted to end up doing that project again. Now, we've just done the 360. We're back in the pool lobby, and we've decided to make that right turn right onto the pool deck. The upper right, or excuse me, upper left-hand corner is the artist rendition. Right below that is the current state. You notice the water is actually in the pool. It is filled. Filtration system is running, and it is a comfortable 80 degrees right now. So, we needed to get that temperature up to 80 degrees in order for them to start the dehumidification system and the HVAC system in there. The upper right-hand corner shows where that wall originally was being constructed. This wall is the northeast side, which faces the stadium. And below, again, another hard worker working his way of painting that entire wall himself. This is actually a view from the opposite side, looking at the southwest side of the Naterium. Artist rendition up in the upper left-hand corner. All the way to your left is the main entrance. It's a set of two double doors that will lead in from that lobby. That is an all-glass wall. Additionally, right next to that is the office space. That office space is all glass in the front. On the lobby side, it is all glass, so we're able to see from the office space into the lobby. We also have a full view of every square inch of the pool. This is completely different than what we ended up having before, where the office space had multiple blind spots. So, if somebody was in the water or entering into the Naterium space, we would have to get up to actually walk out to see who just came in. Here, we see every activity taking place, again, in the lobby, anybody coming in and anybody in the pool area. If you look at that lower photo, you'll see a gentleman standing in the middle. Call me crazy, but this is my favorite part of the entire project. Right behind him is just a plain, simple door. That door actually is going into a family changing station. One would think that, why is this your favorite part? The number of times with our community programs, whether it was for our gym and swims in the evenings, recreational swims, or our lesson programs that we run, when we had a parent, a dad bringing in his daughter, or a mom bringing in her son, and other parents coming up to us letting us know that they were a little uncomfortable having the opposite gender child in that same locker room space. What we tried to do in the past was offer our team party rooms on the opposite side of the pool. Most of those families never even wanted to take that advantage of that, just because of the distance of trying to get over there with very young kids. So, they would actually change them in a closet space located right next to our office that didn't even have a lock on it. So, obviously, this is a huge upgrade. That space actually has a changing table, several lockers, several benches for them to be able to sit on, and a toilet and a sink. And then that other set of glass between those two red pillars, that is our classroom, on-deck classroom. Here's a closer view of the on-deck classroom. It's state-of-the-art, just like any of the other classrooms that we end up having in the building. It'll comfortably hold 20 people, could end up holding more, depending on the way we set up the room. The nice thing about this is, we would end up using this during the school day for our PE courses, but then also using these after the day, in the evening hours, for our lifeguard programs, and then also other special classroom and activities or courses that we can run for our community. One of which, which I think is important, we stress all the time about the youth in our district to be water-safe. Well, I've always wanted to end up making sure that we also offered opportunities for our parents to take CPR and AED courses, so they know what to end up doing before the first responders actually get there. Obviously, the biggest thing right there, if something does end up happening, they'll have that opportunity to take the proper steps to give their children a fighting chance until that additional help gets there. Girls locker room. One of the things that we've really tried to end up doing, this is a brand-new space, however, the lockers are actually the lockers that were purchased back, I believe, in 2005 or 2006. We have, they're in great condition. There was no reason for us to end up getting rid of them, so we utilized this for the current space as well. There's some refurbishing that needs to end up going on to make sure that it fits properly, but again, you look at it, they look like brand-new lockers to us. The bottom photo actually shows the PE instructor's office space. That is a supervising area for them to make sure that everything that's going on in the locker room is up to par and nobody's doing anything wrong. The doorway next to that is leading into the hallway and corridor that leads directly out to that pool space. This is the home balcony side. It's our permitted seating. In the past, the balcony ended up holding just about 225 uncomfortably, and anybody that's been there will understand what I mean by uncomfortably. Now, this side will end up holding over 200 comfortably. We also have AED seating, and if you look at the photo that's on the bottom, you see that ladder going up the wall. Right next to that ladder, to the right, is an elevator that allows anyone with wheelchairs to be able to get up to that second level. In the past, we would end up just putting them on the deck in the lower corner, so they'd actually be separated from the additional fans. This way, they actually be able to go up into the second level. We also have a catwalk that goes across, that goes to the opposite side. That upper level on the opposite side will have telescoping bleachers, which will add another 300 seats. So, we'll have a capability of sitting 500 comfortably in our upper level. Additionally, on the pool deck, with tip-and-roll bleachers, we can fit another 300. So, ultimately, we could end up having 800 spectators in this facility. This just opens up the door to be able to hold several big events, which would help in revenue generation for the district. Nobody's really gonna ever end up seeing this. This is our upgraded DE filtration system. Basically, this is what filters our water. In the past, we ended up having a sand filter. The difference between the sand filter and this, for a sand filter, you can end up getting down to, at best, 20 micron particles. For this system, you end up getting down to one micron particle. What does that mean? The water clarity is gonna be incredible. It's gonna be blue water, it's gonna be crystal clear, and most importantly, even in this lower left-hand corner, that's an ultraviolet light that'll kill any additional bacteria that gets through the DE system. One of the other things that we ended up adding was a new HVAC system, but the most important thing for air quality, we added the evacuator system, which actually runs along the gutter system right on the pool space. Anybody that's been in a pool area, you typically end up hearing somebody say, "Oh, I just smell the chlorine." You don't. What you smell is actually the chloramides that have broken down from the sweat particles on the body, and they're not good to breathe in. So, what we end up doing is, this evacuator system is gonna clear the air right on, right on the pool surface, so anybody that is chin on the surface of the water or standing up on the deck is breathing that same good air quality. This is just an exterior wall from the stadium side looking down. Again, artist rendition when they were putting up the wall, and then the current state right now if you go out there. But they're actually getting that back area ready for doing the concrete pour for several areas, and then also the pavement. And then finally, just a reminder, for the special opening, June 3rd, at 5:30, we're gonna be doing an opening reception, which is gonna include the school board, the Wilson Education Foundation, and then the donors. Where that's gonna take place is actually in that upper balcony on the far side. Again, they're telescoping bleachers, so it really just shows the multipurposes that we can end up using that facility by pushing that in, having some nice high tops. We could end up having different events, as well as birthday parties up in that area. At 6:30, we're gonna do a special first official plunge. This is actually gonna be offered to our Wilson High School senior aquatic athletes. They gave up the most this past year, for all, not only all the teams, for all the different travel that they ended up doing to the Governor Midland School District, to the Schuylkill Valley School District, to the Reading School District, but this is, these athletes ended up giving a whole pool for their final year. So, they are gonna be the first official people that are gonna end up opening up the pool by jumping in, and then from 6:30 to 7:30, we'll end up having a first swim, and then throughout June, we'll be offering different activities for the community to come in, get tours, and then special events. That concludes my presentation, and does anyone have any questions?
Yes. Tom, you had mentioned that the maximum space for people to sit with seating on the pool deck would be 800. To put it in perspective, like the state championship needs up at Penn State, or the District 3 needs, what's the attendance requirement?
Cumberland Valley has a seating capacity of 300 in their stands, and they are packed, and they break it up into multiple sessions, and they only give two tickets out per athlete that competes. So, when I competed way back when, I know I had more than two people that wanted to go to the different events, but in some situations, that's what you were limited to. At Bucknell for the state championship, I believe their seating capacity is just under 500 in their balcony. So, again, and they fill those facilities. So, you know, state championships for water polo, my guess will be that we will fill those stands.
Are the state championships for swimming, is that a bidding process? I mean, would we be able to potentially host the state championship in swimming?
We have, we will actually be hosting the, hopefully, we will end up hosting the Central Penn League Championship this year. We could bid on the district championship, which is typically run down at Cumberland Valley. Valley, and then state championships will be pretty difficult to end up getting. State championships, they like the idea of having two separate facilities for warming up. For us, we do have the capability of doing three lanes and then having a separate area for warmups, but again, it's all within that same facility. You know, but for, we'll actually be hosting the girls' state water polo championship this year. And then, of course, Wilson relays, which I think outnumbers any state championship ever from what I've seen in the past.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, approval of the May 5, 2014 minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Dr. Chmuleski, is there a second? Mrs. Mack, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Investment report and general fund financial reports.
Is there a second? Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
Bills?
Mr. President, I submit our payment of bills in the amount of $3,402,404.80 from the 2013-14 general fund, $996,469.72 from the Capital Reserve Fund, $3,809.55 from the 2013 B construction fund, and $70 from the 2010 construction fund.
Is there a second on Agenda Item Number Two? Mrs. Mack, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
Item Number Three, financial reports.
Mr. President, I would like to submit the following financial reports. Wilson Food Services, April 2014, Wilson Childcare, 2014, April. The activity counts from Wilson West and Southern Middle Schools, also from April of 2014.
As well as senior high.
And senior high. Sorry, next page.
Is there a second? Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
All right, are there any communications this evening?
There are none.
Item Number Four, ratification approval of the following field trips. Request approval of the revised 13-14 field trip schedule as attached, and Wilson Childcare summer field trips for the school age program listed below. These trips are optional. Walking trip to the Pretzel Factory. Is there a motion to approve Item 4.1? Dr. Chmuleski, is there a second? Mrs. Mack, any questions or comments? It's a consent item. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Superintendent's report, Dr. Ruth.
Thank you, President Negreany. Very typical report that you've seen in all of our board agendas. It's Whitfield Elementary, where she has done a fantastic job for us as an elementary principal. We have a director of curriculum position that we are filling here in the school district, so what we plan to do is make even better use of Amy's skillset, so she can have a district-wide influence, and we're very excited because Amy has demonstrated superior work over time, and we're very, very much looking forward to what she'll do with us as a director of curriculum, and I wanted to point that out as an item that's on the superintendent's report. Thank you, congratulations on you two being recommended.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's report? Dr. Chmuleski, second. Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
Item Number Three, financial reports.
Mr. President, I would like to submit the following financial reports. Wilson Food Services, April 2014, Wilson Childcare, 2014, April. The activity counts from Wilson West and Southern Middle Schools, also from April of 2014.
As well as senior high.
And senior high. Sorry, next page.
Is there a second? Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
All right, are there any communications this evening?
There are none.
Item Number Four, ratification approval of the following field trips. Request approval of the revised 13-14 field trip schedule as attached, and Wilson Childcare summer field trips for the school age program listed below. These trips are optional. Walking trip to the Pretzel Factory. Is there a motion to approve Item 4.1? Dr. Chmuleski, is there a second? Mrs. Mack, any questions or comments? It's a consent item. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Superintendent's report, Dr. Ruth.
Thank you, President Negreany. Very typical report that you've seen in all of our board agendas. It's Whitfield Elementary, where she has done a fantastic job for us as an elementary principal. We have a director of curriculum position that we are filling here in the school district, so what we plan to do is make even better use of Amy's skillset, so she can have a district-wide influence, and we're very excited because Amy has demonstrated superior work over time, and we're very, very much looking forward to what she'll do with us as a director of curriculum, and I wanted to point that out as an item that's on the superintendent's report. Thank you, congratulations on you two being recommended.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's report? Dr. Chmuleski, second. Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
Item Number Six, consent item 6.1, except with gratitude, the following donation. $1,019.70 from the Green Valley Home and School Association for the guided reading resource room at the Green Valley Elementary School. Is there a motion to approve that item? Mrs. Reed, is there a second? Dr. Chmuleski, any questions or comments? Consent item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item Number Seven, human resources. 7.1, request approval of the support staff handbook per attached effective June 1, 2014. And 7.2, request approval for dental insurance with Delta Dental effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016, an increase to the current contract of five cents for each primary enrollee per month as an administrative reimbursement. Is there a motion to approve those items? Dr. Chmuleski, is there a second? Mr. Hop, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
Under pupil services, 8.1, request permission to approve the adoption of the settlement agreement and release to directly pay Vanguard School for the tuition fees for the 2014-15 school year through 2017-18 school years, and for the summer education programs during the summers of 2014 through 2017, to comprise all claims raised by the parents of a special education student and to authorize the board president and secretary to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. 8.2, request approval of the Karen Student Assistance Program renewal contract between Karen and the Wilson School District for the 2014-15 school year. 8.3, request approval for the purchase of 17 student slots with River Rock Academy for the 2014-15 school year at a rate of $110 per day for the first semester, and 18 student slots at a rate of $105 per day for the second semester. River Rock will discount Wilson School District in lieu of rent, bringing the annual cost to $248,385. 8.4, request permission to waive tuition for the following students. One female, first grade, Whitfield Elementary; sixth grade female at Wilson West; a ninth grade female student at the high school from April 28, 2014 to the end of the school year as per Board Policy Number 202. 8.5, request approval of a resolution approving and adopting Student Discipline Waiver and Consent Agreement dated May 7, 2014. 8.6, request permission to ratify the placement of one 16-year-old Wilson High School male on May 12, 2014 into the River Rock Academy Alternative Education Program at a rate of $110 per day. 8.7, request approval of a resolution approving and adopting Student Discipline Waiver and Consent Agreement dated May 12, 2014. 8.8, another request for approval of a resolution approving and adopting a Student Discipline Waiver and Consent Agreement also dated May 12, 2014. 8.9, request permission to ratify the placement of one 16-year-old Wilson High School male on May 16, 2014 into the River Rock Academy Alternative Education Program at a rate of $110 per day. 8.10, request permission to ratify contracts with Hogan Learning Academy LLC to provide extended school year services to eight special education students at a daily rate of $350 for five students and $330 for three students. Rates include all related service fees beginning June 23, 2014 and ending August 8, 2014. 8.11, request permission to ratify contract with New Story School, Ken Hurst, to provide extended school year services to one special education high school student at a cost of $160 per day plus related services fees as listed in the agreement, beginning July 7, 2014 and ending August 1, 2014. Item 8.12, request permission to ratify contracts with New Story School, why missing, to provide extended school year services to eight special education students at a cost of $175 per student per day plus related service fees as listed in the agreements beginning June 23, 2014 and ending August 1, 2014. And finally, 8.13, request approval of the resolution and accept and ratify the board committee's recommendation of the expulsion of one 15-year-old student after hearing and written report. Is there a motion to approve those 13 items? Dr. Chmuleski, is there a second? Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments?
I have a brief comment on the Karen Foundation Student Assistance Program. I had the pleasure last week of attending their annual Award of Excellence, which was for Ray and Carol Niag. And that program has been wildly successful. It was started on a grant from the Niags, and last Wednesday, they raised a half a million dollars, a single event record for Berks County, primarily for scholarships for the Student Assistance Program. And it's actually being taken outside the country now and implemented in other schools in Europe and South America.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
All right, under operations, 10.1, request permission to approve the Roy G Snyder Anitorium Change Orders to the following contract. Vision Mechanical Incorporated, an increase of $15,953.04 to ER Stubner Incorporated, an increase of $1,912.70. Also to ER Stubner Incorporated, an increase of $2,134.65, and to Shannon A. Smith Incorporated, a decrease of $5,000. The total change order percentage for this project is 1.1399 percent. And Kyle, is that for the entire project to date? That is what our change order is? Okay. 10.2, request approval of the Capital Reserve Project list for the 2014-15 school year as attached. And 10.3, request approval of an amendment in the form of an approved by administration and the solicitor to the CM3 Building Solutions Incorporated Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract dated October 7, 2013 for the evaluation, design, and installation of upgrades to the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system at the Berkshire Heights Elementary School for an amount not to exceed $427,097, with an appropriate credit to the district associated with removing the boiler replacement from the scope of the original contract. See attached resolution. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Dr. Chmuleski, is there a second? Mrs. Mack, any questions or comments? And just have a brief comment, as we had discussed previously, this investment for the HVAC at Berkshire Heights Elementary School obviously is a significant spending on our facilities, but it certainly demonstrates this board's commitment, and it certainly speaks to Mr. Good's service to the district in turning Berkshire Heights Elementary into a program that generates revenue, has become self-sustaining, and is certainly a benefit not only to the Wilson community but the surrounding community. So, I just thought that should be mentioned. All right, can we get a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Mr. Hop.
Yes.
Mrs. Matt.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Metzger.
Yes.
Mr. Negreany.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Dr. Chmuleski.
Yes.
Eight four, none against.
All right, committee reports. BCTC, Mr. Metzger.
Not much to report. We have not held a meeting in the JOC since the last time we met here. The next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday at 7 o'clock in BCTC East, I believe. That's all.
Thank you. BCIU, Mrs. Reed.
The access funds are still in a same state. The state government is required to do certain services for students. They then ask the BCIU to do those services. Right now, they owe the BCIU $1.2 million. BCIU has been told they will get $200,000, but they don't have it yet. But things are looking good, whatever that means, that they might get more money. They have decided that they will continue services to the end of the school year on faith. I'm not sure where they get their faith, but they're doing it on faith. So, that's where that is. As far as our access funds, I don't know.
[inaudible]
Yeah. And then the other thing is, of course, you know that they're right now working with Reading, and at this point, Reading has two superintendents that they're looking at. They will be going out to site visits, which they do first, and then they'll come back and they will be making a decision on one of the two superintendents. So that's where that is. So, things are improving, and they will survive. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. BCIIT, Mr. Martin.
Our next meeting is the 27th.
Curriculum, Mrs. Reed.
Our next meeting is this Wednesday in this room at 4:00.
Extracurricular, Mr. Wolf.
No report.
Facilities has no report as of right now. We will not be holding a June meeting. Probably looking at a meeting sometime in July, but we'll certainly post that as needed. There is no report for Finance. Still waiting on some Governor's Numbers to come out and hope to have that prior to deciding on our final budget, second meeting of June. HR, Mr. Hop.
No report.
Legislative, Mr. Martin.
Well, they're still on break until they come back June 2.
PR, Mrs. Mack.
Public relations, it's Kristen.
Good evening. We recently organized a successful staff appreciation week, which was held May 5 through the 9th, and did several gift distributions and emails that went out to the staff. Assisted with the academic recognition ceremony that was held last week, and Mary Jo in my office has also been assisting with planning the athletic recognition ceremony, which will be held this Wednesday at the high school. Reached out to the media and promoting some of the many positive things going on within the district today. Wilson actually hosted a Special Olympics down at Gersky Stadium and had great attendance, and we did have some positive media there. So look for that in the paper this week. Whitfield Elementary has a Theater Resonancy Program, and they're doing student productions this Wednesday, May 21, at 2:00 PM. And the Wilson High School Decision Day Celebration is this Friday, May 23, at 9:00 AM in the high school gymnasium. Also working with Tom on organizing the opening reception at the matatorium on Tuesday, June 3. And we are working on the layout for the next issue of Wilson's Pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Technology, Dr. Chimaleski.
No report.
If I may, Dr. Chimaleski, you know, I've spoken to this many times about the opportunity to participate in the Watchdog Program. And I happened to be at Green Valley last week and was in Mr. Creed's room, where every student in that classroom, he teaches second grade, and every student in that classroom has an iPad. And I was in that classroom for more than 30 minutes. And to think that every one of those students was diligently working on those iPads, that the only time that there was any questions being related is how do I work my way through this? That, other than that, it was a peaceful, hard-working classroom. And to think that we had a group of seven and eight-year-olds diligently working with that technology, and the fact that what each of these students had at their disposal with that piece of technology was simply amazing. And I could go on and on for a good half hour as far as how much of an eye-opening experience it was to see technology being used with second grade. But to the adults in this room that don't use technology on a regular basis or was introduced to technology, obviously later in life, and to see how these seven and eight-year-olds, it's second nature to them, and making tremendous use out of this technology was something to be seen. And obviously, you know, Green Valley and that particular classroom was beneficial to be the recipient of a donation from the HSA. And as we are working towards our one-to-one initiative in the high school, certainly we would love to see that trickle down, obviously, into the elementary program. I firmly believe that in education, if you're standing still, you will be passed by. And to utilize technology in all of our buildings is certainly a dream to have, and hopefully it becomes a reality.
Well, since you've went and said that, the current budget, as you know, next year, it's going to be budget-neutral, but we will have one-to-one in the middle schools. And I believe the elementaries are due for a hardware refresh the following year. I don't know if we'll be looking at iPads versus other platforms, but certainly we can get down, or even Chrome, you know, you just have to keep your options open. But certainly, we could get down probably, I hope, given, you know, our current budgeting situation, just on the basis of a hardware refresh the following year. So next year, it would be all the high school and both middle schools. Rules are going to be a little bit different for the middle school than they are for a high school, kind of a softer roll-in phase. And then the following year, hopefully, the elementaries. And I look forward to working as a liaison between technology and curriculum with Mrs. Flannery to help integrate that along with Mr. Trickett. I have great faith in their abilities, certainly Mr. Creed. If he decides he would like to move elsewhere, we'll be having a long conversation. And I will tie him to Green Valley and hopefully get him and his ideas disseminated throughout the district. So now that you made me say that.
I'd like to support Dr. Chimaleski's comments, if I could. And I'd like to also add that, in support of that, also that the hardware, whichever road we go down when we move through elementary, not only will that almost be secondary, what path we decide to take, but 90 percent or more of what you personally saw in Creed's classroom was all instructional. I mean, it was completely because of such a strong instruction side that he can bring. So just imagine what that can be like when we branch that out. I mean.
Well, you know, it allows for true differentiation within the classroom without creating competition.
Right. Agreed.
And that was, to me, something that was really fascinating to watch. I was there earlier in the year. It was my last Watchdog Day this year at Green Valley, now that my youngest is moving on, and my oldest is moving on. It's getting reminiscent right now. But you could have kids that are literally separated a year apart in math ability that can play a game with each other and compete by changing how, what questions the more advanced learner would be answering versus the less advanced learner. They can actually compete and collaborate, and it's an even playing field. That really helps us integrate all kids of varying abilities. You don't have to take the teacher's time up to attempt to address varying levels of differential education. They can do it themselves. But you have to have the teachers that are willing to use the tools.
Hence my supportive comment. Agree completely.
So it's really exciting. My oldest actually is writing an essay in response to the recent issue of invoices, since he tends to disagree with the opinions that were voiced in voices. And now I'm done.
All right. Tonight is Josh Heckman's last meeting, so this will be his last report.
Got one more. Yeah, I got one more.
All right. Josh?
All right. On Saturday, many students from student government help with the I.A.M.A.L. triathlon, which raises money to help disabled athletes. Chris Keg runs that, and if any of you guys know him, he's a great person, great role model for all of us as well. And this Saturday at the Wilson High School, Interact Club will host the first-ever Mr. Berks County at 7:00, which will donate all proceeds to the Four Diamonds Fund. Last week in school, students, to our student relief, AP exams were finally completed, and our scores will be reported in July. Students are currently taking the Keystone Exams and will be doing so for the next two weeks. And finally, numerous students helped out today, as Ms. Kramer said, with Wilson's Special Olympics, which was a very beneficial event for everyone who was involved. Thank you.
And just so, for clarification, President McGree was given faulty information by Dr. Ruth as far as Mr. Heckman's last meeting, so I want to take blame or blame is due.
Yeah, we do want you to come back, so.
You want to do another year?
Education Foundation Report.
We hosted the last board meeting for the foundation this past Friday, May 16. We had really great attendance, and the Board's very engaged. Right now, we're actually working on a three-year strategic budget. And also, we have a strong development committee in place, and we're working to identify businesses to support the foundation through the Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program. Currently finalizing the Spring Venture Grant recipients. And the foundation will be hosting the Wilson Community Night at the Fighting Fields on June 6. We are selling tickets for just a dollar each to help make it a family-friendly, affordable evening. And I'm also organizing and distributing tickets to students at all grade levels. They're getting tickets for academic and athletic achievement. So it'll be a great night if you can attend. If you're interested, please let me know. That's Friday, June 6. Thanks.
Thank you. Solicitors' Report, Mr. Nevis.
No report.
Any other business this evening? And any public participation on non-Agenda Items this evening? No?
None.
Okay. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Mr. Hop, is there a second? Dr. Chimaleski, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you.